Service announcements. At 6:45, we will hold a public hearing regarding the application by Sturbridge Luxury Cinema for a liquor license at 100 Charlton Road. And then we'll move to department reports, town administrator update, action items including action on approval of a buy down program for the Sturbridge Affordable Housing Trust, possible action on the recommendation to approve the tie-in bond engineering proposal for the wastewater treatment facility, consideration and possible action on an abatement request, consideration of Christine Kiley of 69 Arnold Road, consideration and possible action on the town of Sturbridge participating in intermunicipal agreement of the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition FY '26 through FY '30 with the town of Sturbridge having an annual participation participant fee, excuse me, of $4,000. Consideration and possible action on the award and signing of a short-term borrowing for the senior center project, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a live entertainment license to Rockwell Amusements, a host party at the Host Hotel to benefit the Lions Club on June 12th and 15th of 2025. Consideration and possible action on transient vendor's license for Collins gift at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on June 8th, 2025 from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Consideration and possible action on the issuance of a farmer's market one-day liquor license to Broken Creek Vineyard for June 8th, July 6th, August 3rd, and 31st, September 28th, and September 28th of 2025. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Elaine Cook to the Design and Review Committee for a term to begin June 19th, 2025, and expire June 19th, 2028. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Chris Wilson to the Design and Review Committee for a term to begin June 19th, 2025, and expire June 19th, 2028. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Charles Blanchard to the Historical Commission for a term to begin June 30th, 2025, and expire June 30th, 2028. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Brandon Goodwin to the Trails Committee for a term to expire, strike that term to begin June 17th, 2025, and expire June 17th, 2028. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Walter Hershey to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire June 24th, 2028. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Walter Hershey to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 19th. Old business, new business, which we have the sale of miniatures that package towards under, which really should be an action item tonight for discussion. So I'm going to move that up.
Consideration and possible action.
Yeah, I'll move up, we'll put that in just earlier in the agenda so we don't hold people. Correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and adjournment. With that, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the republic, to the states, to our nation, to our government, to liberty, to justice, for all.
Thank you. And again, I'd just like to take a moment of silence tonight and just have everybody think about the terrible events today in Colorado and just a prayer for peace, be it Arab, Jew, Christian, any other religion. Religious crime has no place in our country and hate has no home here. So please just take a moment of silence to think of the victims. Public service announcements. Mary Lou.
Yeah, the Worcester Woo Socks, they're going to have a Sturbridge Town takeover game on Tuesday, July 1st at 6:45. There's going to be a presentation at 6:15. So I encourage everybody to attend, please. It's for our town.
Great. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, Chase.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, no Mary, so Mary.
Patrick.
All right. And I have just a couple notes of, well, Robin, do we want to speak to the Army Corps?
Sure. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will be having an open house here at Town Hall on June 12th to discuss East Brimfield Lake and the Connaught Brook Dam master plan revisions. They have had a meeting here before in the past. This is another meeting that they are having. We encourage people to come. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and they're taking your input. As you know, street or beach is one of the things that's been brought up as part of this, and we are still looking at working on moving toward possibly reopening. So for any members of the public who are interested in what's happening in that east, in that, excuse me, East Brimfield Lake area, we encourage you to attend and provide your input. The Army Corps is great to work with for us, and so please, if you're listening or you're here and you have some interest in that area, please come and provide your input.
Great. Actually, we don't have any department reports tonight, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay. So then I think we're just going to go right to your update because we have some, a couple minutes to kill before 6:45.
And so I don't have much to update other than what you've been getting in your weekly memos. I did apply for the Street or Beach grant with the one stop. We submitted that last week. Mary Lou took my thunder on the Woo Socks Town takeover, July 1st. Please, please come. The more tickets that are sold is a link that when it's a town takeover, you can buy through a Sturbridge link, and they count how many tickets we sell, and it's like a competition, which town. We made it into the top five last time, and we are a very small town to make it into the top five, and I love to win. So buy tickets and go. And it's fun. They do a little presentation. They acknowledge the town. Typically, our little league is up there. It's just a good, kind of fun, relaxing night, good chance to get away. I would like to point out Mutilda behind you, she will be officially being transported in a horse trailer next week to Sturbridge Village as part of the cow parade. And I want to thank Lynn Girard in the clerk's office, whose brainchild this was, Barbara, who submitted the winning name that I had the pleasure of selecting from, it was a blind selection, and Mutilda was the name that was selected. And I particularly want to thank Sheila in the clerk's office because Sheila provided all the ancillary artwork, all the painting, and all the design work on that was done literally by hand by Sheila. So just a little bit of fun, a little lighthearted, a little town pride, and thank you for everybody who participated, employees, the public came, everybody stuck stickers on her, and here she is. So she will officially be on a transport, police escorted to Sturbridge Village next Tuesday.
All right, great, great. Thank you for that.
That's it for me.
All right. We're still ahead, so I'm going to go into the action items. Jean, you want to come up? We're moving to action items, which is consideration and possible action on approval of a buy down program for the Sturbridge Affordable Housing Trust. Jean, please let us know what's going on.
Evening. Thank you for having us. With me, I have April Griffin, our housing coordinator. So as you're probably aware, we've been working pretty hard this past year, getting housing, Affordable Housing Trust up and running and developing some programs. So we actually have two that we've been working on. One, we have ready to go this evening, and we would seek your approval so that we can send this into mass housing for the final step and hopefully kick it off in the coming months. And this is a buy down program where income-eligible households, first-time home buyers, age-qualified households, meaning people 55 and over, displaced homemakers, single parents, et cetera, meeting certain income guidelines, would be able to purchase a home in the town of Sturbridge and actually be awarded between $75,000 and $100,000, depending on what the sales rates and the HUD income levels are at that time, to place towards the purchase of a home. So it really enables someone who may not be able to afford a home, to be able to buy a home. In exchange, a permanent deed restriction will be placed on that home, so it will be affordable in perpetuity. So when we first started designing this program, we really thought $75,000 would be appropriate, but with the market right now, it's looking more like $100,000. So we're hoping to be able to do at least two homes this coming year. We've provided you with all of the guidelines, the eligibility package, and an overview of the program. So in comparison, it might sound expensive, but in comparison, one habitat home that we did on Cedar Street cost us $201,756 in CPA funds, and also we donated the land. So really, we're, we could do almost three homes for the price of doing one habitat home. So while it's not sustainable for the long run, we couldn't possibly do three homes a year. I think it's a great program. It provides homeownership opportunities. It contributes to our subsidized housing inventory, and we're hoping that you'll support this very, I think, very valuable, very great program so that we can move forward with it.
Okay. Questions from the board?
No.
Mary Lou, Chase, anything?
All informations.
Good.
Thank you.
And this is going to be funded through?
Through our community preservation. It'll be funded actually through the Affordable Housing Trust, our trust account. So this, for fiscal year '26, we have $300,000 that was appropriated at town meeting. Fiscal '25, we actually had $100,000 appropriated, so we'll have a total budget of $400,000 for next year, and we're actually hoping to do some down payment assistance next year as well, and those would be loans that would be paid back. But these will be total grants. People will get pre-approved, and then it'll be drawn as a lottery, and you'll have six, six months to be able to put the money to use, and if you can't, we'll go on to the next person.
I think it's a good program.
Yeah. No, it makes sense, and just for the audience and people at home, we have to, as a condition of using CPA funds, we have to take such initiatives so that this is a certain pot of money that is not a part of our normal tax base that we take, and it's, the state requires us, and understandably so, to take steps, you know, for now at the margins, but over time in a more aggressive way to make it so that the town's still affordable because housing prices are really getting out of control in the state. So with that, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Good.
I'll make a motion that the board approves the Sturbridge buy down.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
All right. We are still a few minutes ahead of 7:45, so we're going to go to action item B, consideration and possible action on the recommendation to approve the tie-in bond engineering proposal for wastewater treatment facility, tank rehab unit number one, in the amount of $64,000, has approved at the town meeting FY '25. How's it going, Heather?
Good. How are you? So I provided you a quick little memo where the funding came from. This is a continuation of the project that we'd started a couple years ago, actually, where we're coding the large settling tanks at the wastewater treatment plant as part of normal, every 10, 15-year maintenance, should be 15, we're seeing it about a little sooner than that, that we need to continue.
Okay. Any questions for Heather? This seems pretty straightforward. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the tie-in bond engineering proposal for wastewater treatment facility tank rehabilitation, unit number one, in the amount of $64,000, as approved at the town meeting fiscal year '25.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay.
Let me tell it's an extension.
Okay. We are still a couple, one, couple minutes, I probably won't get into the abatement request because we only have a minute.
Probably do the IMA one.
Yeah, let's do the D. So what's going on with action item D, which is consideration and possible action on the town of Sturbridge participating in the intermunicipal agreement of the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition FY '2026 through FY '2330 with the town of Sturbridge with an annual participant fee of $4,000.
So we have been a part of this IMA historically for probably over 15 years now. It's intermunicipal agreement. One town has to take the administration of it, and then they basically hold all the town's funds, and then the commission does all of the programming and everything else. So this has been a very valuable resource for us here in central Mass. It's actually been the model that the statewide has followed after. So we get things like our public participation goals for our, for notifications, so they pull the money together. They pull the money together when they're making comments and making educational materials for us even internally, and so that basically every town doesn't have to hire consultant and do everything. We pull our money together. We hire consultant through the coalition. They train us. So it's a very valuable tool of how to meet some of our stormwater goals and how to tell us how to meet them, so going forward.
Okay. So this is, and this agreement is with Shrewsbury?
This agreement that now is, it used to be Spencer, you probably remember that. Now it's in Shrewsbury, he's going to do the administration.
Great, that's helpful. All right. Any questions from the board? All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. So now we're going to call the 6:45 public hearing. Yeah. Mary Dowling, if you could read the notice?
Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Sturbridge Luxury Cinema LLC for a liquor license. All alcohol beverages at the premises currently located at 100 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, with the Sturbridge Select Board. In accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held June 2, 2025 at 6:45, Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge, 308 Main Street.
So we have the applicant here? Anybody?
Yeah, come on now.
All right. If you could just please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Brian Haney. I'm one of the owners.
This is John Deverney. I'm the GM.
Okay, great. All right. So can you guys tell us a little about what you're looking to do and how things are going?
Things are going very well. We're looking to do, you know, beer and wine and alcohol, and start doing food there also.
Okay. All right. It's pretty self-explanatory, but questions from the board?
No questions.
Anything? All right. This is a public hearing, so if anybody from the public wants to comment about this, it's their opportunity. All right. Going once, going twice, sold. All right. I think it's, makes sense, and we really appreciate having you guys in town, and we're happy to see that space taken up.
The responses have been pretty, pretty great. People love it.
We're a very cultured community that enjoys its film.
And its liquor.
Well, with that noted, but, all right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the alcohol beverage license for Sturbridge Luxury Cinema LLC.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you for coming out.
I know that was your original intent to have the restaurant and the, and so I had a number of people when you opened saying, when is the food and?
I get emails every week.
Oh, you get it too, so we all get it, so that's good. All over social media, everybody's looking for you.
Yeah. So we'll get, we'll get.
Good luck.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay.
Okay. We will now go to action item C, which is consideration and possible action on the abatement request from Christine Kiley of 69 Arnold Road. Is Ms. Kiley here? Come on down.
This abatement went through the preliminary review of Barbara Barry, Heather, and myself to see if it fell into a billing mistake category, the preliminary review, just to see if it was something that we would say, yes, there was a billing error or something like that. It did not meet those requirements, therefore she had the opportunity to then bring it forward to the board, and that's where we are. And Heather is here with some information. The, some of the questions that we had were the timeliness within the timeframe to be able to apply for the abatement, as well as the fact that the meter indicates that the water did go through. There was a meter check on that, so we did have the meter checked.
Okay. Ms. Kiley, so what's going on from your perspective?
Originally, I started this, this was the summer billing cycle, and I started this whole email chain starting November 6th. And it continued on, like they checked for a leak, like through a 24-hour, I think, cycle. It didn't look like it at that time, and then keep going forward. They came out to the house and they had to replace something on the meter. I don't know exactly everything about that. It wasn't logging, I think.
Okay.
And then just recently, we just realized when we turned our sprinklers on, or had them come turn them on, that there was two leaks in the system.
Okay. So the leaks were in the sprinklers?
That's what we're thinking is now, this just happened a week ago or so.
Okay. So?
It doubled from usual time.
Okay. So let me understand the timing here first, and then we'll kind of go from there.
So the reading that I'm talking about was from August, oh, July, I'm sorry, July 24.
July of '24?
Yes.
Okay. So that reading was on July?
The bill came out on 10/21 of '24.
It's July 1st, October 1st.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. And so, so that bill comes due, and then because your sprinklers weren't on, then all the other bills seem to go back to normal?
Yes, everything was back to normal.
So the, so basically, the long and the short of it is that the, for a period of last summer, your sprinklers had a leak in it that appears that caused the bill to spike. You, you?
We were not aware of it. We put our sprinklers on at 3:00 a.m. in the morning because of the water band as part of it, so we were not aware of any leak happening.
Okay. Well, questions from the board first?
So just so I understand, so now you're coming forward because now you've turned on your sprinklers?
Yes, and now we have found that there is a leak once they opened them up, yes.
So that's why from October 24 to now, you didn't pursue an appeal?
I did. I, I started back in November with this whole?
Right.
Email chain, and it kept going back and forth.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Seven in November.
Where did you find the leak?
Yes, and then like last month, I don't think anyone was able to come to the meeting.
Okay, but hold on a second. There's a question, Heather.
Where did you find the leak?
I didn't. The company that comes and opens up our, it was in the, in the piping, I think. So I think when we had our yard aerated, it must have hit.
So, well, I don't want to speak for the board, but I will note that how these usually work is if it's not attributable to the town, or, you know, like it's a, you know, we've had some conversations about whether or not the town should have known certain things, but if there's really no failure on the end of the town, we don't usually grant these type of abatements because it's just a, you know, it's not really tenable, because what happens is the second you kind of enter the building of the property, and then somebody has a toilet that's running, somebody has a broken piece of equipment, it kind of, it goes beyond our thing, and it sounds like the sprinkler system that you have, that's your property, and though I understand that it's frustrating and that, you know, a big bill is difficult to deal with.
Right. I just realized a week ago that, so that's why I was coming in as if there was no problem at all. That was my intention originally.
Yeah.
But at this point, I feel like now the interest, because I haven't paid that because I wanted to see what was going to come out of this, the interest has built up for almost a year.
And what's the interest?
Oh, we, actually, because we weren't aware of this aspect of it, so last we knew there, there was no awareness of what the issue was, so we did not know to look for just the interest at this point.
So you can't, yeah, the state won't let us?
No, no, I understand that. I'm just, oh, sorry. Go.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't have the ability as a board to waive the interest? The interest is set under Mass General Law, and once the interest gets over $15, there is no ability in the law to evade it. So we do always tell people when they are filing for an abatement that they should pay the bill, and then if there's any, you know, anything that changes down the road, that we would then refund the money. So the board, if the board was going to grant an abatement, then obviously the interest would change at some point because, you know, it would go down because you're changing the principal amount, but for you just to take a vote to waive the interest or anything like that, you don't have the legal authority to do that under, under the law. Okay?
Okay. Well, that's unfortunately, that part of it, so I don't, unfortunately, just, from my perspective?
No one told me that to pay it either. That's another issue.
I understand that, but the?
I know you can't do anything about that.
I'm sorry, nobody told you to pay it? Is that what you said?
No. And when I went to pay my recent one, they're like, okay, just pay that amount, and that was it. So I did pay the current one, I just didn't pay that one.
Okay, well, I?
And I know there's nothing you can do with this.
Yeah, that, the problem is, is because it, it goes back to that, because if we're not altering the core liability, the state makes it so we can't play with the interest. I apologize for that.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I understand where everyone's coming from. We still keep a list of?
It's on the website.
Yes, on the website. Was her property on that list?
No. The high usage alert?
Yes.
I am not on that, no.
Yeah. I'm just curious why?
I would have to go back and review, because the high usage is a very high percentage. She was only a 30%.
And she didn't trigger that with her leak?
It's 24 hours per day, so as soon as her, that triggers if somebody's meter runs literally over for 24 hours straight, but because sprinklers probably went off during that cycle of 24 hours, it didn't trip the leak list.
We don't do it every day, that's why.
Yeah, and so it wouldn't have tripped.
Listen, well, that's, that's good information, but again, I'm sorry we can't be more helpful to you, but thank you for coming in. Was there any other discussion or motion on that? Okay. If we don't have a motion, then we are moving on. Moving on to consideration and possible action on the award and signing of a short-term borrowing for the senior center project.
I'll just give you a brief overview. Okay. So today's short-term bond anticipation note, this is not a bond issue. I didn't feel it was appropriate based on the volatility of the market. So borrowed $1,780,000 for a period of one year. That is the CPA funds for the senior center project. The, we received four bids. The low bid was a rate of 4.25%, but there was a premium on the bid of $18,031.40, which gave us a net interest cost of 3.237%. So in front of you tonight, you have a very lengthy motion, vote that you need to take to award the bid. I left that in front of everyone's chair. I apologize, everything came today. It didn't come to me till late after 5:00 on, on Friday. So if you could, if you could take that vote, and then I just have a few pieces of paper that Mary Dowling will have to sign, and then we'll be all set. If there's any questions, please ask.
No, I don't think so from me. Any room in the board? Though I think we have to vote and then read this, by the way, it's red because it says it's unanimous in the heading. Right? The following votes were unanimously, unanimously passed, which implies that the votes had occurred.
That is the vote, I believe. You can do however you want.
Okay, I'll read it in, and, well, it's typed into the clerk, but I'll do it, take a hit for you, Mary. I, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge?
No, so it would be the clerk.
Start with where it says voted.
Oh, I see, I see.
So it is the clerk that's doing it, but you could, I mean?
It's fine, I'll start at the voted. For the record, voted to approve the sale of $1,780,000, 4.25%, general obligation, bond anticipation notes, the notes, of the town dated June 9th, 2025, and payable June 9th, 2026, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a Division of National Financial Services, LLC, at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $18,031.40. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sales of the notes, the preparation and distribution of this notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 22nd, 2025, and a final official statement dated May 29th, 2025, each in such form has may be, may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaken in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12. In such form has may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient or such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with the relevant securities law. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes collectively the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by an electronic mail in a quote PDF file or by any other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart, signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates received or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. And this is probably for Mary, right?
Yeah, so that's the vote part, so you can just take that vote and you should be good.
Okay, so do we have, I will move to, I make a motion to, vote as stated. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
I'm just gonna have Mary take two minutes?
Yeah, of course. And I'm gonna have a sip of water. Okay, now we're on to action item F. Consideration and possible action on the issuance of a live entertainment license to Rockwell Amusements to host a carnival at the Sturbridge Host Hotel to benefit the Lions Club on June 12th and 15th, 2025.
How you doing? I'm Brian Sharon from Rockwell Amusements.
Bill Mladger.
So Frances is taking the lead on getting all the signatures that we need and working with these gentlemen to try to be able to get this done. The event is coming up soon, so this is our last meeting to be able, prior to the event.
Okay, questions from the board?
Has anything, nothing like this has ever been done at the Host before, has it?
No, not that we know of, no.
What's it going to entail?
It's gonna have amusement rides, games, and food. We'll have a little bit of kiddie rides and adult rides for families.
Frances, did you get sign up?
We have sign up from Police Department, Board of South, conservation, we're waiting on fire. That's the only one that's outstanding, but they gave a verbal, we're looking for support, EMT support.
So you could vote to issue the license tonight, not to be released until we have the fire in writing, if you wanted to, and then you could just pick up the license once Frances lets you know we have that. That way then we have everything in writing.
Okay, I mean, that seems to make sense to me if it was everybody else.
Yeah, and it's a four-day event?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that the way I read it is a little peculiar because it was separate. So it's basically starting when, on the Thursday through the weekend?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll pull one on Monday more.
Get set up, but June 12th through the 15th?
Yes.
Okay, anything else from the board? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the issuance of a live entertainment license to Rockwell Amusements to host a carnival at the Sturbridge Host Hotel to benefit the Lions Club, June 12th through the 15th, 2025.
I would just, I'll second that, but I'd amend it to say contingent upon...
Fire Department approval.
Specifically the fire, but any other applicable. Okay, I will second that. Do we have, all those in favor? Yeah, just have it. Thank you, Donlin, have fun.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to address the, things are a little out of order because the sale of liquor miniatures should have been in the action items. So we're gonna discuss that now. So for the audience, as I'm sure there's, I know there's some folks here who want to speak about this. This is not a public hearing, however, we wanted to hold to make sure that as we were discussing this, that the people who are holding the license have the ability to speak to it. So I think the best way to do that is, I believe there's three of these licenses in town. So if one per license holder, one person speaking seems fair. We're probably gonna start with the board, but that's gonna kind of be how this works. So there's three licenses, if, you know, I imagine we understand most of the issues, but just we'll hear from one person for party unless there's a reason for an exception, which would be at the Chair's approval. Okay, so starting with that, so Mary Dowling, I think that this, you initially brought this up, so if we could kind of set the table and...
Sure, so I initially brought it up more as a littering event. I think our DPW director was here and she had just given her update. And I just find an inordinate amount of NIPS along Route 15. I think one time I was going for a run and there was at least 75 in there. And I don't know who's leaving them and we don't know, obviously, if they are purchased in Sturbridge or not, but they're definitely ending up in Sturbridge and along Route 20. And I was hoping, you know, for us to clean them, pick them. I actually was not aware that it is within our power to ban NIPS. Okay, I didn't know that. So we, maybe about two or three weeks later, interestingly enough, we had a letter from a neighboring town official, I think it was a minister from a church, asking us to be more green. And perhaps he sent this, I don't know who the man is, to other neighboring towns. And one of them was, he had a host of things, and we are a pretty green community, we try. But one of them was consider banning NIPS. And we were not aware as a board whether that was by state law or whether the town has a right to do it. So I looked into it a little bit and our council said that is a matter for, at the municipal level. And interestingly, there have been a number of towns that have, in fact, banned NIPS. A lot of tourist area towns, and I'm assuming they have a high number in their streets. Lot of towns along the Cape, the city of Newton, my understanding now. Whether they're still in effect, I don't know, and I was gonna ask our town administrator to do a little follow-up with respect to the towns that have banned them and what is the result? You know, are they pleased that they did it? Is it still in effect? But a lot of Cape, a lot of towns along the Cape have banned them. And I just thought it was worth us researching it and looking into it as a town to see if that's something that we might want to do. And so that's pretty much, and obviously, you know, we want input from the liquor stores. You know, my sense is that they're all going to come down a very distinct way in terms of finances. But I'd also like to hear from residents. And, you know, I've talked to some residents and some are very much on board that it should go to town meeting vote and some are not against doing it, some are in favor of doing it. I think New Bedford is another town, Martha's Vineyard, Edgar Town, they have banned them, Oak Bluffs. So I think it's just worth having a discussion. I'm not saying, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. And I'm still at the point where I want more information before I even have an opinion on it. And I know that according to our council, there's different ways of going about doing it. Let's just say the majority of the board, and I don't even know if this is the case, and it's probably not the case, would be in favor of it. You can make the change at a policy level, which I would not be in favor of. I know a number of towns go to town meeting and hear what the town wants to do and then they make it a bylaw, which is the route that I would recommend in the event that we choose to take it that far. So this is informational and I'm glad for the people who are here. Obviously, there's a littering issue to it and we can't prove that people are drinking and driving, obviously. But at the same time, NIPS are typically used for a quick drink while you're driving. I mean, that is one of the uses. I don't think they're often, you know, you don't buy 50 of them for a party. Maybe we do. But if they're getting thrown out of cars, then certainly somebody in the car is drinking and driving, whether it's the driver or a passenger. So it kind of has two dimensions to it. There's an environmental part with the litter and then also maybe a safety part with respect to people driving and drinking. And a financial impact on our local economy, which I'm sure will be represented tonight by the package stores.
Great, all right, so with that, oh, good to me.
Well, you mentioned three licenses.
I thought there was Lucky Mart, Fred's, and Yankees. Those were the three that I believe were selling.
Because... We have a list. Yeah, because the wines and...
I think, yeah, I think it's just, I think it's all, well, if we're just talking about liquor miniatures, I believe, and I might be incorrect, but I believe there are only three licenses in town. So, well, let's just...
That's a list of all, yes, all pastries in town.
The wines and mal liquor go to the other level. But let's just do it in order on the list that's in front of me, which is, who would like to speak for Lucky Mart, located at 122 Main Street in Sturbridge? Come on down. Please just identify yourself for the record and let me know what you kind of say.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mr. Patel, the co-owner of the Lucky Mart located at 122 Main Street here in Sturbridge. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to hear us out.
Sure.
I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the proposed ban on NIPS. I understand and, I do understand and share the concern about the litter and the public drinking, but banning NIPS punishes the responsible adult and hurt local businesses, especially small liquor store like us who relies on the sales to stay afloat. Our total sales, it depends on approximately, we are losing, if this ban in effect, it may lose about 35% of the total business, which is...
Can you just say what percent again?
35%.
35% are NIPS?
Total business, of the total business, you know, 32, 35% of the...
So the miniature bottles are 35% except the...
For the smaller stores.
Small, small, small stores like that.
NIPS are a legal product used by responsible, of many including seniors and those who want a fixed income, who prefer small and affordable options. This ban won't stop the behavior, bad behavior, it just removes the legal options and drive the business to the neighboring town. Instead of outright ban, I encourage the board to look more targeted solution like a redemption program for NIPS order, better public awareness, and clean program. Thank you very much.
I agree. No, we appreciate that. Any questions before?
I just want to understand, so you're saying, and I think our Chair already said this, but I'm just taking some notes. You're saying if the town were to ban NIPS, you would lose 35% of your business?
Because...
So what kind of volume would you say of NIPS that you sell on a regular basis? So that's a lot higher than what I would have envisioned.
So what I'm meant to say, the current, when the client comes to purchase the NIPS, they don't only purchase the NIPS, they do purchase the milk, soda, juice, lottery. So over 35% is revenue.
Everything, include everything, not only for NIPS.
So, okay, so stepping back, so the grosser part of the business is 35%. That, and you're, if I'm understanding it, and don't let me put words here.
No, like anybody coming over, they're like, they're buying like two NIPS and they buy soda, chips.
Yeah, so it's...
Lottery, everything for that one.
So you have people on contained incomes are doing very specific purchases, maybe filling their tank, getting a loaf of bread, milk, they might get soda, and they might get some beer and a nip or two or something like that.
That's what I meant to say.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Not only for NIPS.
That makes a big difference. And not that you're expected to know this, but do you actually, since you're the one who brought up the percentage of your business in that total sale, you know, I'm buying wine, I'm buying this, I'm buying soda, and I bought a nip, that's the 35%?
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Do you have any idea what percentage of your business is actually nip sales? Because how much does a nip cost?
It depends on the products, it depends on the product.
What is the range of...
Depends nip, like some are $1, $2, it's different items.
$1 out of $5, $3?
$3, yeah.
$1, $3, so what, would you be able to guesstimate what percentage?
I cannot give you the right exit amount right now. It's not up to me.
Okay, so, no, that's very helpful. We, no, we appreciate that. We appreciate you saying so. Thank you, Donlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Fred's Variety, who would like to turn in?
Hello, members of the board. My name's Christine Brady. I'm here representing Fred's Variety Package Store on 25 Buckfield Road. As package store retailers, we're here tonight to ask Sturbridge, this Board of Select Board, not to pass a ban on the mini bottles. We work hard to make an honest wage and keep the community members employed, just like any other small business. Every dollar we make matters. Mini bottles, while they may seem small, they do make up a large part of our business. Like Mr. Patel was saying, they're also often combined with other groceries. People stop in, we're right off the highway, they're stopping in to get other groceries. We make sandwiches there, so they might be picking up a sandwich, dinner, lunch, gas, and household products. And with that being said, it's about a 35% of our business of people coming in, traveling, like, not 35% nip, but it would take, the amount of people that come in to buy NIPS with other household products and so forth, is about 30 to 35% of the business. And also, I feel that if mini bottles are to be banned in Sturbridge, customers are gonna take that business elsewhere, they're gonna go elsewhere, which could cause us to cut employees that work for us. Without that revenue, we might be forced to do that, possibly leaving people without a job at this point. People who support the ban, we know that mini bottles are a litter issue. The litter is an issue, but it is made up of many things. I've also seen Dunkin' Donuts, soda cans, snack packages. I just can't imagine that mini bottles are the only thing that's out there for trash. I think it has to be somehow getting people to have more knowledge of how they're supposed to take care of their trash. I don't think it should lay solely on the small business owners. I think instead to solve the problem of litter through public education, more trash bins, and fines for those that litter. And I feel that after COVID, we have recovered from the hard times that COVID has caused. And now during the uncertain economic times that we're having right now, we're asking for help and compassion on how to educate the community better on littering instead of affecting our small businesses. And again, the effects of this ban could cause stores to close, leaving employees without a job and without a way for not providing for their families. Coming up with smarter solutions to address the problem without hurting our small businesses in Sturbridge.
Great, any questions?
How you doing, Samia?
Good.
Good to see you.
All right, call to order, Mr. Kavinsky. All right, thank you very much for coming in, guys.
And I also do have a, we have a signed petition.
Great.
I don't know if you'd like to leave that here or...
Yeah, if you, do you have a copy for yourself?
Do you have a copy? I just, this is the oldest one I have.
Uh, we can make a copy for him.
Because I just have my all the customer who's come to the store and we get some more.
Make a copy in return. All right, anything else unless...
Thank you.
All right, our friends from Yankees Spirits now. All right. All right, Miss Samia, go ahead.
Hi.
Just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, hi, I'm familiar with some of you guys. I've been here before you for some other things. For those who don't know, my name is Megan Jones and I have lived in Sturbridge for the last 13 years with my husband and our four kids. I have been a part of the Sturbridge community for my entire life. I grew up working at Yankee Spirits. The business has been my family business for almost 40 years. It was my first job and I hope what will be my last job. I'm here tonight, obviously, to speak about NIPS. We oppose it because it punishes the Sturbridge residents, it punishes the Sturbridge business owners, and it doesn't do anything to fix the true issue, which is people who litter. We need to work on enforcing against the people who are littering, regardless of the product which they are littering. By putting a NIPS ban into one town versus another, we drive the consumer out of Sturbridge and we give it to the neighboring towns. A NIPS ban was enacted in Chelsea, which saw several of their stores subsequently close and the surrounding communities saw huge increases in their sales. When Chelsea closed after that, there was a 64% increase in sales in East Boston. When Chelsea closed after that, there was a 64% increase in sales in East Boston, 25% in Revere, and 13% in Everett. There are 12 liquor stores in the towns and cities surrounding us in Sturbridge, and this would benefit them and harm us, and it would still not stop the product from landing on our streets. People do buy 50mls for a large variety of reasons. Some people, we have a lot of older folks that come in and they just need a small size for baking or cooking. Some people are on a fixed income and can only afford small quantities at once, so they stop in once a day, and then they leave. Some people use it for portion control, as they know they are not responsible enough to not have more without that. But regardless of why people are buying them, we should not be taking away their choice or their availability to do so. I am an executive board member of the Massachusetts Package Store Association, so with that, I'm engaged in advocacy all across the Commonwealth when it comes to the issue of NIPs bans popping up. I testified at the State House just a few weeks ago. Legislatively, there are 12 bills in play at the state level, which have the potential to help us here. What we hope will be the best-case solution is that a deposit will be put on each NIP, which not only drives people not to throw it out in the first place, but it also does contribute to the likelihood of litter being picked up and recycled. Banning 50mls in Sturbridge when a potential solution is on the horizon would really harm us needlessly. Prohibiting 50mls also has had very dangerous consequences in some of the other towns that have done it. Some people who break the law littering are also breaking the law drinking and driving, which is indefensible. But banning the NIPs unfortunately will not stop their bad behavior. They may just buy the next larger size in Sturbridge and consume that while driving, or they may buy it in a different town where 50mls are still allowed and have a longer drive back home to Sturbridge. The town of Falmouth, a NIPs ban was implemented in the fall of 2021, and DUI arrests in the pre-ban versus post-ban year saw almost a 40% increase. This is not what I would like to bring to Sturbridge. The NIPs bans have really started to pop up, communities are trying them in the last few years, and we have seen that in general, the public is not in support of them. When it's gone to a public vote, it has failed 10 of the last 13 times. The general public does not want this. The town of Plymouth banned them in 2023, and in 2024, they overturned that on public referendum. In the last 25 days, we have collected over 600 signatures from our customers since this was first brought to our attention, many of whom, most of whom are Sturbridge residents. They are in support of us, they do not want this. In the fall of 2020, a ban was proposed in our store location in Attleboro, and we began working with the local chapter of Keep Massachusetts Beautiful. We continue this work still there and are regularly making donations through the Bounty on NIPs program that they have there in Attleboro. When the bucket is filled with NIPs, we recycle them with our redemption company, and each time, we mail a check to the city of Attleboro. In our Sturbridge location, there is not a Keep Sturbridge Beautiful chapter, we would happily take this on independently. We have preemptively put out a bucket in our Sturbridge location, and we will work to educate our customers on filling it with empty NIPs, which would then translate to dollars we would donate back to the town. In the year of 2024, Yankee Spirits donated over $16,000 to local causes. We have supported the town's various sports teams, the local charities, the annual Harvest Festival, and the community at large. We did, in fact, make a donation to the Sturbridge Trail community for their cleanup in 2022. We are committed to being a part of that solution, of the solution here. With that in mind, we organized a town cleanup, which was actually yesterday. Myself, the Yankee Spirits staff, our fellow Sturbridge retailers, and our other industry partners are all committed to helping with the litter problem. It's been unfairly called a NIPs problem, it is really a litter problem. Selling and consuming of NIPs is not illegal. Littering in all of its forms is illegal, and this is where we need to step up. We need to be targeting people who litter. Fast food packaging, cigarette butts, chips and candy wrappers, and water bottles are all part of what make up litter, as we saw on Sunday in great number. And we will, that will all remain untouched by a NIPs ban. The litter will persist. Lastly, Yankee Spirits in Sturbridge has been a destination store with people traveling from distances all over to shop with us. After they travel here, they visit the local restaurants, they shop in the local Sturbridge stores. We help to drive commerce to the town as a whole. Additionally, as a destination store, we have always prided ourselves on being a discount store. I actually once said that across our roof. NIPs for us are one of the highest margin items that we carry, and losing that margin would make this even more detrimental to us. The liquor business in general is really suffering. Local retailers are under tremendous pressure from national chains, big box stores, the legalizing of cannabis, the introduction of iLottery, increasing costs everywhere, insurance increases, et cetera, et cetera, have all made it more and more difficult for small businesses to survive. Over 200 liquor licenses in the state of Massachusetts sold last year, many at a loss, as businesses are finding it tougher and tougher to survive. We are a small, family-owned company, we have already undergone multiple rounds of layoffs just in the last 12 months. At our Sturbridge location, we have over 45 staff members, more than a dozen of which are Sturbridge residents, including myself, so this is very personal to me, even more when you include our local salesmen and our partners. On behalf of all of us, I ask that you not move forward with this. In our Sturbridge location, the NIPs alone make up 8% of all sales. A loss of 8% would be absolutely devastating at a time when our business is already incredibly soft. What this also fails to represent, as the other people were alluding to, is how much loss we would face based upon people not shopping with us at all, and knowing they needed the NIPs, so when they're shopping for their order, their wine, their beer, and their larger format spirits, they're going to go to a different stop at a town. They won't be coming in to buy their wine and their beer with us, we will lose the entire sale. There is no way of forecasting just how monstrous this loss would be, but simply put, it would be more than we could sustain. And so with all of that in mind, we look forward to working with the town, we are committed to helping and being a part of any solution that we discuss, but we cannot support a NIPs ban.
Okay, thank you for that. So unless there's any questions?
Just wanted to elaborate on something.
Okay.
So excellent presentation, this is the kind of facts that I want, and I'm glad that you brought up Chelsea. But maybe we can look into the, some of the other towns too, because I am curious about what kind of effect it had on the economy and employees and all, and if these towns are pleased that they did it, did any other towns clo, did any liquor stores close because of it, in Newton, or Oak Bluffs, or Edgar Town? So if we can look into it a little bit more too, I would appreciate that. But I want to know a little bit more about this Keep Sturbridge, Keep Attleboro Beautiful.
Yeah.
Did that come about as a result of them inquiring about NIPs? Tell me a little bit about how that all transpired, because that sounds really great for Sturbridge regardless, so...
Yeah, it was already, so Keep, and I'm, we do have some people here, so if I have questions, I might look to them.
May I speak?
No, we're not going to open this up. This is, I understand the...
So what I know is, what I know to be true, is that their, Keep Massachusetts Beautiful is an organization.
Right.
They have local chapters in different places. We have a store location in Attleboro, and a NIPs ban was brought to the table at that, at some, in 2020. So their local chapter is Keep Attleboro Beautiful. There is not a Keep Sturbridge Beautiful. But so what the program is, is they literally truly have a, I don't know what size bucket that is.
Yeah, just a five-gallon bucket.
And every time it gets, people throw their NIPs in there, and every time it gets filled, we mail the city a check. They have never come asking for it, they've never checked on us, and we do it religiously.
Oh, I'm not, I'm trying to...
No, 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 I just, but that's, so we put one in Sturbridge now.
About as a result of having the discussion about NIPs? Or it was coincidentally at the same time?
We already had a Keep Attleboro Beautiful.
Was it in response to that?
They already had Keep Attleboro Beautiful, the bucket was just a part of, when the NIPs ban came up, that bucket got put there, but Keep Attleboro Beautiful already existed.
And we can get more, we can get more information.
Yeah, but the bucket came after having a discussion. Got it.
So I think we're, unless there's quite other questions?
And the 8% of all sales, is that the same kind of comparison when they said they're going in for all their groceries?
No, that is truly just the NIPs.
You, you trap, you isolate and trap?
Yes, we pulled all of what our 50ml sales would be, and it is 8% of all of the sales in our Sturbridge location, so when you add in what we would also lose in losing all of the other items, it would be, I would estimate, anywhere from 15% or higher.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right.
Great presentation.
Yeah, really good.
All right, so...
We also had our sheets too for the petition.
Oh, great, thank you, yes. Are they copies or?
They are the originals. We can bring a copy to you.
No, no, we can make a copy for you now. Okay, so my thoughts on this are as follows. I don't think I'm comfortable taking a vote tonight on this. I think that, and what I would say to all the business owners, I don't think this is just litter. I don't think, I don't really accept that framing. I think that the, there is an element where you see these places, there seems to be bottles thrown out at turns, places we might not see people. Now, that does not mean that I'm in favor of banning it necessarily, just, I'm just pushing back on a point of logic. And the other part of it is, the problem we have with this type of waste is the state has to make, address the model. This is not, this is going to, these are arising for a reason. This is a lot of waste that is going right into our landfill by far. So as we have fewer, less and less space in our landfill, which is going to be capped in the next couple of years, and we are going to have to find other places for this space, the state needs to get this waste out of our landfills. And that means Mr. Mariano has to act on his bill and actually do something for once. And I will, and I will posit that he might actually listen to people in the liquor business more than he will listen to municipalities. So what I would say to y'all is, I don't think that this, we're ready for primetime to do anything, but I suspect that the willingness in this community for us to do something is probably higher than perhaps in some other communities, because our issues are different. Now, again, I'm not trying to punish any of you specifically for that, I don't blame any of you for that, but it is a problem, and it is a problem that needs to be communicated viciously and aggressively to be controlled. And so, and it is not, and that is really my assessment of the circumstance, because we got a liquor problem, and we got a driving drunk problem. The driving drunk problem, maybe that happens anyways, but the litter problem and the stuff going into our landfill, I can assure you does not. And that is 100% correctable, and that is correctable, again, in Boston. So that's my opinion on it, I don't know if the board feels any differently, but...
Do you mind if I jump in and talk a little, just so everybody knows we're out? So I'm against the ban personally, I think Sturbridge is a unique town having Yankee Spirits, and I will speak to Yankees as they're the big, you know, box store in town. And Megan alluded to it, they are a destination store. We get a lot of business out of Connecticut, coming up here, filling up with gas, going out to eat, shopping at Yankee Spirits. And how long has Yankees been here?
Longer than I've been alive.
And I just think, at this point in time, with so many uncertain times in the economy, to pull this from them is just not a fair look, in my opinion. There is a problem with littering, I think it's healthy they're having this discussion, I think it's healthy that everybody's getting on the same page. If you guys see something, you know...
Say something?
Say something, I didn't want to say that, but, you know, and, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. And obviously, you know, same goes for Fred's and Extramart, you guys have both have been great partners with the town, as well as Yankees, and, you know, it's probably, we're all good, we're all here talking about it.
Yeah, this is impugnative.
Could I, could I just ask if...
Well, let's see, may I?
I was just going to say, if we want to look at a Keep Sturbridge Beautiful program, as you're suggesting, we're happy to coordinate, do some type of a kickoff, some type of public relations event on it, if we think something like that, because in the short term, yes, if we can somehow get people to bring these NIPs back and get them into a recycling thing instead of into our landfill, that is a huge benefit to everybody. So I'm happy if you want to follow up and work with any of the groups in the interim while we figure it out, or while Boston figures out what they're doing.
Yeah.
I'm happy to partner with you, and you certainly can reach out through my office, through Francis, and we can have a meeting and do a kickoff and do like a big public relations campaign. To your point, Jamie, that we can try to get people thinking about this, we're not going to stop everybody from tossing junk out the window, people are going to do it, but if we could at least incentivize somehow people to bring those bottles back.
But, and I, I'm not suggesting that that is not productive, but it is something of a Band-Aid on the issue, so, but that, you know, we can't fix everything in one night. And Mary, what were you going to say?
I was going to say, I'm not in favor of the ban.
Yeah.
I think it would be taking business away from businesses that are small, and a large one, and local, and, you know, a lot of these NIPs, they can buy them in Connecticut and flip them out here, you know? It's, it's...
There's truth to that.
It's a litter issue, basically.
To some extent, but, but regardless, unless, I don't want to belabor it, I know everybody's going to be here late, I don't think that we're going to do anything much more. Mary, you?
No, I just want to add that this wasn't to have a vote tonight, and it wouldn't have been up to five people to decide whether or not a certain type of alcohol was going to be banned. Those are the type of things that go to town meeting, and I know you mentioned that 10 out of 13 communities voted it down, but I will say that those, you know, kudos to the 13 communities for putting it in front of the voters. I would not have myself said, no, this is up to this board, and this board isn't in favor of it anyway, but that's the type of decision that really should be made at the community level. And so I commend those towns that actually put it before their voters, and if, probably if we put it before Sturbridge, they would have voted it down. But it's our job, when issues come up, like that level of litter that you see on Route 15, it's really shocking for the people getting on and off 84, the amount of NIPs on the side of the road. And, you know, I know Dunkin' Donuts and all that, but most of the litter along 15 is usually, is NIPs, at least when I walk it or exercise along that road. So this wasn't for us to decide, but it was for doing a little more research, like I was pleased to know what happened in Chelsea, and in Plymouth, they turned it around, but those communities brought it to the voters first. And I just wanted the board to have a discussion about whether or not, if we did the research on the city of Newton, those towns, are they happy with their decision? Did the liquor stores lose that much? I can't speak for the liquor stores, but when I heard 35%, that is shocking, but at the same time, I don't know if all of those people would have decided not to get everything else there if they couldn't get a NIP there. And that's what everybody's presupposing with 35%, that you'd lose all of that wine buying and a loaf of bread, if they couldn't buy a NIP there, they wouldn't shop there anymore. And there's no way of quantifying that. I, I think that's probably a stretch, that they wouldn't shop there at all. So, I mean, I would have preferred if the board was willing to look at the, some of the other towns, like our, like Yankee Spirits, they did their homework, and they came forward with a town that reversed it, Plymouth, and Chelsea, where they lost a lot of business. But at the same time, what about those other towns? That would be up for, up to us to look into it and then weigh it to determine whether or not it's, we would even want it to bring it to the voters for their decision. So I don't think the appetite of the board is to even do that, that would have been my preference, to research it ourselves as extensively as the business owners did, but if not, I hope some good came of this, and at a minimum, this Keeps Sturbridge Beautiful, if all that happened as a result of putting it as an agenda item, I think it's a win, and I'm glad I brought it forward.
Good, Mary.
Okay, I'm not in favor of the ban. I don't think that it's a drinking problem, I think it's more of a litter problem, like everyone's saying. You cannot prove how many of those NIPs are actually bought in the town of Sturbridge. You know, they could be bought in other towns and thrown out the window. So I think the littering problem is more of an issue than anything else, and I think the ban, it's not fair to take food out of the mouths of some of these business owners.
No, it's fair. All right, so with that, I don't think we're going to have a vote tonight, I think that...
Well, I don't know, I mean, what exactly is it Mary wants? You want...
Well, I wanted the awareness of bringing this forward, which we did, and some good may come of it, so again, I stand behind it. I wanted us to perhaps, look, we have two communities that were not in favor of what happened, Chelsea and Plymouth. I wouldn't want to see these liquor stores harmed either, but at the same time, I wanted to make the decision with all of the facts. Like if no liquor stores lost a significant amount of business in the other communities that brought it to a vote, and their townspeople banned it, I wanted to be able to weigh everything. Right now, we're really just weighing one side, that's all, which is fine, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, pressure the board into doing research, but it would have been good to know that these towns banned it, and the liquor stores didn't in fact lose a lot of business, and there, they did see a marked improvement on the amount of NIPs that were thrown out the window while people were passengers in cars, whether they were the driver or not. Would have been nice to look at all of the facts, not just one side, and I feel like tonight, you know, we really looked at one side, we didn't research it out, and I may not be in favor when I look at all of it as well. So that's what I was after, a little bit more research and making...
Well, we can, we can still continue to evaluate it, and Romney will look into it, but this is by understanding, I'm actually fairly well familiar with the issue, is that Chelsea, Newton, and maybe one other city around the, banned it. Those city, those are city cities, and they have different populations they're dealing with, public intoxication, homelessness, it's a very different place than us. Plymouth passed it through their Board of Aldermen, or the Select Board, or whatever their city council, or whatever their function is. And then it was reversed by a referendum by the community. And the only other communities that I'm aware of in the state that have it are on the Cape. And the Cape is a very specific place when it becomes to drinking and partying and drugs and all these sort of other epidemic issues around being a vacation place. So the, the, so I think that the, there is a, the, the analysis that you're asking for, Mary, is quite fair, but the, but the, but we're gonna end up in the same place, at least right now, which is, we're not gonna pull the rug out of our local businesses to do this. But it is a problem. And like, it's not a problem that we're just making up. And I know that you guys aren't saying that. But it is like this, if you're, think of it a different way. If 13 communities spent the money to have these votes, and towns are actually banning them in two hugely populous cities in the greater Boston area, of very different economic profiles are banning them, that means there's a problem. It doesn't mean that it's, that whatever the solution is, but it is probably indicative of an issue. So it's an issue we're gonna have to deal with, and I think that it's quite fair, Mary, to get more information on these topics, but I think for right now, we should just let, let everybody go home.
Well, the problem, Jamie, is that, you know, we can research and research and, you know, that takes time, and we're still going to come down to the fact that the Board of Selectmen should be making decisions.
So, I mean, that's fine, but if there, if you have a motion, make it. You know, I mean, that's sort of where we're at at this point. It's that the, if you would like to make a motion, that's fair. And if you, if you...
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen not approve the ban on nips.
I'll second that.
Sure. All those in favor?
Can you put discussion? Can you just usually discuss?
Oh, sure, sure.
The motion is well taken, and I think it really misrepresents what my intent was tonight. I was not going to come and make a motion to ban nips. And I just, let's state it for the record, because the motion makes it sound like that's what I was going to do. So I'm actually going to abstain from the vote, and it was never gonna be up to us whether we banned nips anyway. It should be a town-wide vote. But I, I'm fine with abstaining on that. But just to set the record straight, this was informational only. And I think for anybody to think it was anything other than that is just...
I, I don't think anybody thinks that, Mary.
Not appropriate. Well, no, a motion, like, we make a motion not to ban them.
Well, I don't, we are the alcohol licensing board. We will, we, we may, and we, at our discretion, might hand that power off to a town to vote because we feel like it's something that the, the consumer should be making a decision on. But the power does in fact actually reside with this. What's up?
Sit here.
It sits here. So if we're, the, the motion, in my opinion, I don't think Mary was doing anything untoward. I think it is actually a pretty significant public health issue, and I don't think it's, I think it is a very important conversation for all of us to have together. But the, and I don't take the motion to mean that just because that's the ruling we had now, that's not, we're won't necessarily be next week, 10 years, 20 years, who knows? But the, but the point remains. So with that, I think we've exhausted the topic, unless you really have something, Mary?
No, I'm gonna make a different motion.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Of course.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we request our town administrator to consult with Yankee Spirits, who very graciously offered to head up a type of Keep Sturbridge Beautiful similar to what was done in Attleboro.
All right, did we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, guys, thank you very much for coming in, thank you for the conversation. We do, we, we appreciate the economic circumstances you guys are dealing with.
And thank you for your business.
Yeah, thank you for your time and your business.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Consideration and possible action on a transient vendor's license for Collins' gift at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on June 8th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. All right, do, what's going on here, Rob?
Nothing, nothing of concern.
I don't, is this a regular, I don't remember them.
Yes, my cell's giving me...
Do they come every year?
Here, let's see, hold on a second, let me get back to you. This was the Collins' gift at the Host.
250 people, any questions, concerns?
There are no concerns on our end.
No. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transient vendor's license for Collins' gift at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on June 8th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
All those in favor? Great. Consideration and possible action on transient vendor license for DB and BC Production LLC, David Brockman, for an antique textile vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on July 8th.
No concerns.
No concerns, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transient vendor license for DB and BC Production LLC, David Brockman, for an antique textile vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on July 8th, 2025, and September 1st, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay, do, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Great.
All right, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a farmer's market one-day liquor license to Broken Creek Vineyard for June 8th, July 6th, August 3rd, and 31st, September, and September 28th, 2025.
No concerns on this, and just a reminder, the market started last weekend, yesterday.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, it did. So, all right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Abstained.
Okay. All right, the consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Elaine Cook to the Design and Review Committee for a term to begin June 19th, 2025, and expire June 19th, 2028.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Christine Wilson to the Design and Review Committee for a term to begin June 19th, 2025, and expire June 19th, 2028.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Uh-oh. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get this one through. Ah, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Charles Blanchard to the Historical Commission for a term to begin June 30th, 2025, and expire June 30th, 2028. So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Great.
I don't know, though, he's a shady character.
All right, moving on.
Oh, we got another shady one coming up, too.
Yeah, I'm not, all right. Consideration and possible action on the re, on the reappointment of Brandon Goodwin to the Trails Committee for a term to begin June 17th, 2025, and expire June 17th, 2028. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, all those opposed, vote, notice my proposition. All right, moving on. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Walter Hershey to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire June 24th, 2028.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Ah, consideration, oh, the Historical Commission. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Walter Hershey to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 19th, 2028.
So moved.
Second? I'll say it. All those in favor? Great. All right, moving on to old business. I, I would, we'll start. Just on curvies, could we just set up an executive session so the board could get an update on that?
Yes.
Okay, so for the next meeting?
The next meeting would be good, yes.
That'd be great. I will also, just on old business as well, I need this, basically within the next week, I need the comments on Robyn's performance evaluation, so we can have that for the next June meeting, because we need to do it by the end of the year. I'm not gonna say that none of you have turned in your homework, but none of you have turned in your homework, so I'm not pleased.
And I wasn't alone.
I'm not surprised you didn't turn.
Yeah, it was the rest of them.
I was in Connecticut all week.
Yeah, it doesn't count. All right, so...
You dog ate it, I know.
That's my old business. Mary Blanchard, old business.
None.
Mary Dillon.
I know I keep asking about this, but what is going on with beautification efforts? ARPA gave a lot of money, and I have to say for the record, I'm very underwhelmed.
Babes was waiting for the nurseries to get everything in, worked. They told me last week they were hoping to start, I think the weather's delayed it a bit. I did also email DOT about barrels on the median strips. She is putting me through to another department within DOT. She's not sure that they will allow anything on that. I'd like to, on that 13120 median, but I am in touch with them. But Babes, they were waiting, there were a little delay, I guess, on getting some of the stuff into the nurseries. But they have not even really begun, those little plantings are not...
No, I understand that, Robyn, it's just that this, like, now we're in the beginning of June, and even most people's private yards are well underway. And I feel like the project has really been moving slowly. And we're, we're into June, and there's still, and we gave a significant amount of money. And when ARPA committees met, you know, rec, I thought it would be a little bit more of a priority, because it's, it's just been a long time. I know Babes is busy.
And it's been under contract since December, we've had it contracted, so...
I understand. So I know the plantings there are not part of that large sum of money. And then also, thank you for looking into the barrels, I'm sure that's probably not going to come to fruition. But I also want to comment, on Route 20, there are weeds on that median strip. It looks like our town can't afford to, to maintain Route 20 and 131 in a better way, and that we have the funds. You know, we have the Betterment Committee, we, and I think it's worse than it has been. I know it is the Mass DOT's, you know, domain, but I think in prior years, I don't know if our Mass DOT workers have gotten out there and taken care of those weeds, but, you know, and there's all, the bricks are, are starting to disintegrate, and there's like rocks forming, you know, they're kind of dug up. And again, it looks like we, we can't afford to maintain it better, and I feel like we can, and we have to do a better job on that.
Anything else?
No.
Old business, Chase?
I have no old, but just to echo Mary's thoughts, maybe a letter. I know we've sent them in the past to the state, to Mass DOT, to try, ask for, you know, more manpower, more help, and just say it's a little different story.
Just automate it, send it every...
I know, I know.
Little good one on the hour.
They're busy with the bridge, but...
Every town's in the same...
Oh, no, it's, it's a real, especially out here.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Or, or we have to do it ourselves.
No, I, I know every town's in the same boat, but we're, again, a unique situation with the State Barn right when you pull off the exit. I don't know any other town that has a State Barn right where you pull off the exit. And, you know, Route 20, I consider our main street.
I agree.
I strongly disagree with that, but that's fine. Yeah. No, I, I, I listen, the blunt reality is, is we pay enough taxes, they can get a weed trimmer, you know? And so we just have to keep pushing. Thank you for noting that, Mary. All right, Chase, anything else?
Nothing else, I just saw a hand in the audience go up and...
Yeah.
Good, Charlie.
I got a situation on Route 20 and 131. If you talk about the sidewalks, you know, the town really was responsible for taking care of the sidewalks. When I was on the board before, what we actually did was have the DPW take care of those weeds. In fact, they weren't certified for it, so I know what, several of the years, we actually hired Northern Tree to come out, and they treated those things to get rid of the weeds, at least on the sidewalks.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie. I think in the past, we've, we've done a bet, we've, you know, we've addressed it in a better way.
And us on the median strip, but certainly the sidewalks, we've maintained them in the previous...
Yeah, it, it seems worse, and I think some of it also kind of goes onto, at certain points, right onto the private property line, which I, we probably should be, if we're doing the side, not, not treating them brash.
It's been a while, you know, Greg Moss was the DPW, I think, the last time this happened, at least that I'm aware of. And, I mean, I know it was hard to talk, it would always start to be worse in June, and we could never get anyone out there till the end of June to get it done. But, I mean, it is something that maybe could be addressed.
No, it's good, thank you for noting it. All right.
I had one other quick thing. I don't, I don't know if you've already brought this up. I know when I heard the meeting before about the nips, there was talk about the deposit. And I just wanted you to know, when I was on the Mass Municipal Managers Policy Committee several years ago, not even several years, a few years ago, one of the things we did study was the deposits on nips. And it was voted to move forward, so I believe it's somewhere in the state legislature.
It's actively being blocked by Rob Mariano.
I, I believe it's somewhere.
Yeah, no, it's just to say, this is, it's, it's not, it's, everybody agrees with it. It's, I wasn't being hyperbolic, but it literally is not being pushed forward.
Okay.
It's just Quincy guy from Quincy sticking to everybody else.
At least the Managers Association did.
All right, well, we're gonna count that as citizen's forum. No, I'm kidding. All right, all right, anything else, Chase?
No, nothing.
Mary Lou? All right, new business, Mary Lou?
Nothing.
New business, Chase?
Nothing, thank you.
Mary Dillon?
No.
No.
I have nothing.
We did new business.
Well, let's go back to old business. How's the cable committee?
Good question.
So, yeah, so Mr. Menard is working with them. At this point, what they're agreeing on is just an extension while we're negotiating on the contract. They are moving forward, the big thing they're looking at is reducing the length of time that we lock in, because our cable committee is concerned with the changing technology. We don't want to lock in as long as we have. Spectrum typically likes to lock in long-term, and so that's going to be the one thing in the discussion that we are standing on.
On that note, aren't, is, and maybe I'm, maybe it's not Spectrum, but isn't Cox and Spectrum in a talks to merge?
There is, there is a merger discussion going on with the major ones. We also just had Verizon look for support to do underprivileged areas. So there is a lot going on right now, generally in the industry. But Mr. Menard has, has been great, that cable committee's been great, and he is on top of it. And we have to let the state know that we are in discussions as our contract comes to a close.
Great. Okay, correspondence. Mary Dillon?
Do we have something?
I think it's just the Walktober.
Okay, so we have a flyer from the Last Green Valley regarding Walktober, the 35th Annual Walktober in the Last Green Valley National Heritage Quarter, and it's from September 20 to November 9, 2025.
Have we ever participated in that? Has the town, has the town ever participated in that?
Yeah.
I personally have not.
Sandra Gibson Quigley's done tours, and a few other people have, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've been to it. Now that they take a bit.
Can I ask one more thing on old business?
Of course.
Very fast, I know everyone wants to go home. The, the Woo Socks...
July 1st?
Yeah, do we have to, just, do we get tickets on our own, or do we all sit together?
If I know that the board wants tickets, I can, they will put some aside for us, but you also can buy them, they have like a discounted rate that you can buy them through if the public wants them. But if I know you're coming, I can have so many set aside for the board.
You set mine aside?
I've set two aside, three aside for you.
July 1?
July 1.
Okay. And so I would...
So just let me know, and I could reach out to my contact up there, and he'll hold tickets, and I'll pick them up at like a will call. And then, you know, I'll just text all you wherever I am and get them to you.
Perfect. Okay. And then, I think there's a letter from the Army Corps as well.
I'm sorry. Army Corps. Oh, I'm, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Address to our chair, dated May 14th. It is a thank you for the generous donation of equipment, labor, and materials for trail maintenance for the one-mile section of the Grand Trunk Trail. That's managed by the Army Corps, and it's signed by Keith Beecher, the project manager, East Brinsfield Lake, Westfield Lake, and Conan Brook Dam.
Great. Okay, that's...
I'd like to thank Mr. Beecher also for his support on this Streeter Beach application that, I guess, he is voice support.
Yeah, the Army Corps has been a great partner.
Very good.
Okay. Two minutes. We have first, the minutes of January 2nd, 2020. What's that?
Two minutes. Two minutes.
Oh.
Two minutes.
All right. So the January 2nd, 2024 minutes. Any amendments?
Not by me.
I think we're coming to the last of the catch-ups, pretty much. We're almost finishing out on any of those old outstanding ones, and we're caught up on the current.
All right. Any...
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Minutes of January 2nd, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, I have it. All right. Moving to the May 19th, 2025, um, minutes. Any amendments? All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Minutes of May 19th, 2025, as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Nastain, Francis, because I was impressed with him. Okay. Um, all right. Citizens forum, anything else, Charlie?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. The second. All those in favor? Great.